Okay, can I get a motion to reconvene? Smita and Rajesh. Well, welcome back. Our high school student is not present with us at the moment. So then, next on the agenda would be the report of the superintendent, Mr. Fetter.
All right, trying to be brief. First of all, do we have any principals in the audience? Can you all stand up, please? Pete Verteen, sit down. Don't even raise your hand again. No, no, Meg, you are a principal, yes. Sorry, I didn't realize it was that difficult to question. Today is National School Principals' Day. Let's give these guys around. Meg, that's good, Meg. Yep, you're good. Really, an amazing team, incredible work. They take care of your staff and your students every day. Happy National Principals' Day. Also, we have PTO members. Who are our PTO members? Raise your hand. We're honoring those guys. And who here was able to attend the Joanne Kirkus Student Art Gallery? Where's Blair? Blair, are you here? No Blair? Kristen? No. Absolutely tremendous. I was able to walk in there when it was empty. And the art's amazing, our kids. It's a reminder of why we do what we do and why we protect what we protect with our funds. Because of what our kids need to be successful later in life is more than just being good readers, writers, and math. They need it all. Also, really good news. Just got this news, I think today, Pete, you probably know about this. The Pierre and Darrell Players, they entered into a competition called the Central Jersey Marquee Awards, and they were nominated for eight different awards. So, it's great stuff. And that is Gillian Trader, who leads that. And she's grown a lot. I mean, done amazing things with these kids from the first one where she was took over for the longtime person who'd been there doing it forever. It's fantastic. Eight nominees, fantastic. Next week is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. So another big weekend. Already, is it already out there, Lourdes? Is the billboard ready to rock already? Or, yep, so we used that billboard, they put it up for us, and then a whole bunch of things happened. I'd imagine the PTO people that are here get busy next week as well. Yep, I'd imagine you do. Another good piece of information, the 12th Congressional District Art Competition on April 25th. The 12th Congressional District Art Competition is sponsored by the representative Bonnie Watson Coleman. The top three finalists will have their artwork displayed in the tunnel, which connects the Capitol Building and the congressional offices. And we're excited to share that the first-place winner is from South Brunswick High School. Last year, I spent a lot of time in that tunnel, back and forth in Trenton. So it's really good to have our kids represented. Our kids continuously represent across all spectrums with academic, arts, sports, anything. In fact, before I finish, Mike, do you have anything to add to my report for sports?
Absolutely. Put your hands together for our girls' track team, as well as our boys tennis team. They are GMC Champions. Unfortunately, I wasn't there for the girls' track, but I was there this afternoon earlier for boys' tennis. So you would have been very, very proud.
Great stuff.
Thank you.
All right, and after we're done with the important work of honoring the PTO, we will do a little budget presentation. And I know everyone's excited for that. And I'm ending, I have not done this in a while. See if I can remember their names. Marti? Marty? And Bobby? Bobby, does Marty get to speak at all?
I'm gonna let him speak a little bit.
That's very kind. Is our Education Foundation leadership? Oh boy, what do we got? Oh, just the helmet.
Just a helmet.
All right, not too bad.
Tighten it up. I'm not gonna put the light on. And I have it written out and everything. "Thank you, Mr. Fetter, for allowing us to speak for a few months this evening about the Education Foundation's upcoming event. If I'm up here speaking and it's the beginning of May, it means just one thing. It's time for the Tour de South Brunswick. This year, the event will take place on June 1st, starting at the high school. I have already put my request in for sunny skies. It worked last year, and we're certainly hoping that it works again this year. Once again, we have three routes. The 25-mile route heads towards 27, winds through Kendall Park and Monmouth Junction, and Dayton with a rest stop at Eagles Landing Day Camp on Davidson Mill Road. The 10-mile route circles Dayton. There's a 4-mile route across the street from the high school, which also offers a shorter 2-mile route. Details of the times are on the website at foundationsb.org. For those of you unfamiliar with the Tour de South Brunswick, let me give you a very brief history. We started the ride in 2011 and had less than 20 participants. Since then, our numbers have swelled before 2020 to over 800 people. We gained some momentum last year and are hoping to continue that trend." Now Marty gets to speak.
Thank you, Bobby. Bobby is the treasurer of the Ed Foundation. I have the fortune to be the president of the foundation. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we give money back to the schools related to the tour. And that is, we have a participation piece of it that for every 5% of the school's enrollment, we'll add $50, we'll give $50 back to the school. So I'll make some numbers up that I hope will be easy to follow. If the school had an enrollment of 100, if five people sign up and say that they're going to support that school, that's $50 to the school. And if 10 people do, there will be 10%, there would be $100, and so on. So that's the major money that we'd be able to give back to the school for every 5% based upon your enrollment as of October. And we also have a one-for-one award. That is, for every participant that signs up and selects your school, you get a dollar back. So there are two different ways to get money back to the schools. I'm happy that we have the principals here this evening, right, Mr. Fetter? It's Principal's Day, so I'll take that to heart. And we have the PTO presidents who do great work. And we certainly appreciate you at the Ed Foundation. So, back to Bobby.
And they want to spend it at a board meeting.
Well, that hasn't changed in 25 years, so it's okay.
And after all these years, I'd like to remind you of one thing. While riding any distance in the Tour de South Brunswick, helmets are required. Thank you.
So I can turn it over to Laura in a second, but we do this every year. We honor the PTO presidents. And in case people don't know, once a month, I meet with the PTO presidents, as does the board president. And it's always a great opportunity to hear from them, although I usually babble too much. But I really do appreciate you guys. You're fantastic. Couldn't ask for more from you. I know you do everything you can for those schools. And since you began those booster thons, I think we've become kind of rich on that. So thank you for all you guys do. And now I'll turn it over to you, Laura, to turn it over and...
Okay, so he's turning it over to me for me to turn it over to Ms. Farady, Principal over at Indian Fields.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome you to our annual PTO appreciation event. Tonight, we gather not only to celebrate the incredible contributions of our parent-teacher organization, but also to acknowledge the commitment and support you provide to our schools and our students. The role of the PTO extends far beyond organizing events and fundraising. You're the backbone of our educational community, a vital force that helps bridge the gap between home and school. You have had an impact on all our schools. The resources you help secure have enhanced our classrooms, introduced new programs, and provided opportunities for our students that they wouldn't otherwise have. From science fairs to arts programs, your support enriches the educational experience and fosters a love for learning. The events you organize bring families together, strengthen relationships, and cultivate a spirit of collaboration among parents, teachers, and staff. This sense of belonging not only benefits our students, but also creates an environment where educators feel supported and empowered to do their best work. As administrators, we're grateful to your dedication. Your commitment to our students' education and well-being is truly inspiring. We cannot thank you enough for the countless hours you dedicate to making our school a better place. Tonight, as we reflect on your achievements, let's celebrate the incredible work that has taken place. We're excited to share a video montage of all the various events and contributions you have made to our schools. Thank you for your wavering support and hard work. Together, we're building a brighter future for our students. An additional thank you to your families, who share your time and attention with the schools that you volunteer for so many hours. And the space, your garages or basements that contain the endless supply of PTO events, items, school swag, or Amazon box deliveries of all the ideas you bring to life for our students. I'd now like to ask Board President Laura Hernandez to come up and help me, as we call each of you up individually, to receive your certificate of appreciation and a gift bag that our students in the Transition Center have so kindly put together. Special thank you to Casey Kelly for pulling that together pretty quickly for me. Appreciate it. So first, from Brooks Crossing, we'll call up Drewik Choski and Nicole Demati. Jamie McRone will receive that for them. From Brunswick Acres, Kelly Sanchez. And Principal Stacy Tao will be accepting that. From Greenbrook, Lisa Browning. From Indian Fields, Lynn Monday. From Cambridge, Nalofur Tofarush and Rami Lee Van Valkenburg. I have it. From Constable, Cheryl Crick and Vanessa Gray. From Crossroads North and South, Dipta Shukla. From Monmouth Junction, Zunari Tariq and Manasa Gengula. And from South Brunswick High School, Ina Betty and Dipta Shindola.
Okay, so the PTO does so many things that people aren't even aware of behind the scenes that make teachers' lives so much easier. And as a teacher, I can tell you how much you help us and how much we value what you do, even though we might not always say how much we value what you do. I also know that the excitement that's built up for Teacher Appreciation Week is really high. They're like so excited, and you guys never fail to impress. So, like us here, we think you should get a raise in your pay for what you do because you are truly the unsung heroes and such a major part of our village to make this happen. So on behalf of the whole board, we thank you. We thank you, we thank you, we thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Ground for becoming a board member.
And it's great training ground for becoming a board member.
The board president suggested a raise. I would like to make a motion to double their salaries.
Yes, I second that.
Every year, we'd like to give them a little bit more.
Yeah.
Dipika just came in. Nice try sneaking in the back.
Oh, thank you, Dipika! Well, Dipika not only does the high school, but like Scott said, we have a monthly president's PTO, and Scott and I join. She formulates that and gets that going. And to get people together, to get adults together, is a very difficult task, and you do it very well. So thank you so much. Okay. I know, I agree. I agree. Okay, now... It is the budget.
It's the budget.
It is the budget.
You want to take a short recess?
So we could take a short recess. You guys are welcome to stay. And this time, I mean, everybody usually says, "It's boring, go home." We encourage you to stay. Like it's an important thing.
If you do leave, we are gonna write your name down.
We are. We are. Don't think we don't see this. We see this. You're being filmed. Look at the camera.
Those schools whose PTO presidents leave will be handled accordingly.
So, yeah, we'll take a brief break if you want to leave. And I know we have some babies here. Okay, you guys ready to roll? Yes? Right, right, right. Got it. Before?
One hour and a half. I did actually half hour of stuff. I put more slides.
Yes, 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 yes.
Feel constrained. All right, welcome. So, I will say, this is a lot of repetition. The last meeting, we adopted a tentative budget. Dave and I put some more, a little bit meat in around a few of the areas we want to go over with you. But I'm gonna kind of move through it. And there will be a time for you guys to ask questions, and there's a time for the public to give comments as well, okay? So the basic key factors that affect a school budget for us specifically are state aid funding, the tax levy cap, health insurance, enrollment, new residential neighborhoods, many, facilities, and we have five- and 10-year facilities plans. And of those, those are the things that are pressing all at the same time on the district right now. So it would be good if we could take any one of those things away, but we can't. They're all embedded in what we're trying to accomplish, which is maintain the programs we do for kids, keep property value high, continue making this an attractive place for people to move their families. That is what we do. So, real quick, state aid. As you know, the two numbers in red are how much we lost going forward for this year. So we lost another 1 point, about $1.7 million, $1,070,000. However, as a reminder to the board, this is extremely important. If they did not put the 3% guardrail up, we would currently be looking at another $1.8 million in loss right now. The formula spit out an additional $1.8 million in loss for our district for this year. Because of the 3% guardrail, where no one was allowed to lose more than 3%, we only lost the $427,000, and they did not give us the stabilization aid. Okay? Question? The question was, is there a chance to get stabilization aid? Not that we know of. Right now, I believe they're gonna leave the tax incentive aid program as the program. I can't speak out, but I don't know, though. So I want to talk to you quickly. This is a new slide. This is the changing community. The state and the federal government collects data on free and reduced lunch, the number of free and reduced lunch students. So if you go all the way to the right, that's 2014-15. And then I just skipped a bunch of years and went straight to 22-23. And you'll see, it kind of stayed pretty stable. Right around that 12% mark was the percentage of students that are on free and reduced lunch. Look at this year. 18.8%, almost 1 in 5 of our students are currently qualified for free and reduced lunch in South Brunswick. That is an extremely different population change in the state, in the district. Now Suzanne and I studied this, mostly Suzanne, and we found the number did actually increase as well. So we did one more little piece of legwork to find out, did anything change in the last two years? Is it an anomaly of some kind? Like, we know during COVID, there was an anomaly that year, but not too much. It kind of went back. But last year, it shot up a little bit. And then 24-25 is, you know, that's basically almost about an 80% increase, a 70% increase in two years. Here's one change that did occur. The rules of how you let the communities know, this is federal, changed, which made it more available for people to understand and know what their options were. While we had an increase, we should believe the 18.8% more accurately reflects our current population of students. We share this just to show there's a change. We also share this to make sure we can express, if you look at any national data, national data will always say stronger test scores come where there's more money. That is a standard across any metric out there on a national and large metadata standard. It goes to say, then, it could cost the district more money to help students that struggle financially at home to keep up. That is a normal thing. In other words, the district might have to spend more money to continue the excellence for all students, not just the students that come from a large home. We owe that to all students. So it's a change, it's relatively significant, and we wanted to share that with you. Thank you, Suzanne, for the work on that. Now, this work was done by our Assistant Business Administrator, Steve Corso. Now, people ask this question all the time. Why is South Brunswick so bad at this budgeting thing that we can't seem to run the budget? There are four districts in the county. Three of them are about the same size. Also, all four of them started out in 1920 with about the same amount of state aid. That's the column, the light blue on the left of each of those. South Brunswick started with about $25 million. Edison started with about $26 million. Piscataway is around $23.5 million, and North Brunswick right around $25 million. Now, since 1920, we now went down $8 million. Edison went up $72 million. What? 2019, 2020.
He said 1920.
1920. Oh, sorry, not the year, yeah. I mean, I knew what I was saying. If you guys follow along, great. If not, don't worry about it. In Piscataway, where they started a little lower, they're a little smaller than us, and they now have $11 million more dollars. and they now have $11 million more than us. Look at North Brunswick, our neighbor. In the same amount of time that we lost $8 million, they are almost 4 times our amount. So, when you think about, why is South Brunswick in this boat? How could we not be in this boat, is the question? That's the question. If you look at the number of students, Edison was completely, look at us for a minute. They were completely underfunded. Look how horribly underfunded they were in the year 2019, 2020. They had the same amount of state aid as we did, but they had 2.5 times many more students. That's crazy. So, the formula was a little bit right. A little bit right. They should be somewhere right now around 50 million, if you do the numbers. But they're at 100 million. I learned that this week, the Edison Board voted down their budget. It was a 0% budget. And they voted it down because they have 100 million new dollars, and they don't want to add it. They could bank that money and save it if something changes in the next 3 years. We are not living in a world where we've received 70-plus new millions of dollars, or even North Brunswick, who's received, what, 40? 35? 32 million dollars over that time? I've shared this with you over time, but we thought it would be a good visual to fully understand why we're here. And the reason it doesn't look a lot worse here is because of the enrollment, which we've talked about. So, current events. So, it was shared with me that there's a post out there by one of our residents. And that post said these 2 things, along with some other choice words that were derogatory towards the Board and myself, that what we are proposing are the highest taxes in the state. All I can share, and I hope that our community understands what they do when they outright purposely lie to the community, disagree. There might be people in this audience right now that are going to disagree with what you decide. And they have every right to disagree. They have every right to come up here and voice their reasoning as to why they disagree. What no one has a right to do is purposely lie to the community to hurt the community. Because you know what it does? It hurts the community when the community believes they're somehow getting the raw deal, worse than anybody else. So, in under an hour, those are all articles that exist. Anyone can look them up, but I had the links for you. You all now, is it 7:30? Yes, you all received this on your email. You have this presentation. The green part of the quote from the same person is one I think is an awesome quote. Invite people to come to a meeting. Now, I don't believe the purpose of that was just to come to listen. However, I will agree with that part of the quote. I ask this community, and most people understand this, voice an opposition opinion. Don't lie to the community and try to hurt them. That is a bitter move that does nothing for anyone. However, to just to show how far off we are from the highest, which that person knew, all you have to do is plug in New Jersey School Funding. Some of those districts up there have highest percentages over 35% increases for this coming year. Because, as I have been telling the Board and as I have been telling the Legislature for years, there's no choice but to be here. Those districts are way beyond us. And those are names you've never heard before. They're brand-new to the game. That means in 1 year, somehow, in 1 year, losing max 3% of their state aid, they went from never really hearing about them to places selling, one of those schools up there was selling 2 buildings. One already sold the second building, but we know about that one. Other schools reported having class sizes of 40 to 50 in elementary school. That's in those articles. Deemer is the Commissioner of Education. He, that's an article about him testifying and acknowledging certain concerns and issues. I just put this up there to remind the Board, any of the community that are watching, that we are not in this position by accident. We've telegraphed this situation and have been planning for it. We were bailed out last year, and they gave us a little bit of a bailout again this year. Don't know what you're going to have to deal with next year. Don't know if there's any more bailouts coming. We don't know. And that was the question just asked, was Dr. Raj asked, do we know if there's any more money coming? We don't know. We're not predicting it. We have predicted that in the past. We're not predicting it this round. The second thing is the tax levy cap. I'm going to go fast. Real quick, we know we cannot afford a 2% cap year over year. The things that we spend money on, salaries, health benefits, energy, transportation, tuition, all of it, it just costs more. Just salaries alone are more than 2%. Benefits alone are more than 2%. Energy costs go up. Transportation costs go up. Supplies go up. Everything goes up. We actually need $8 million new a year to just keep moving forward. This year, if you have a 2%, we'd be left filling a $5.5 million hole. Because of a health waiver, which I shared with you, we are still left with a $3.6 million hole. We're going to show you what we've done with that. Ultimately, when you combine the state aid reductions and the 2% cap, we are stuck with a $3.6 million deficit. And I am here to tell you again, that is nothing compared to some of our districts in the state right now. Hillsborough, 22 million. Olbridge, 15 million. Districts with like massive holes they cannot fill. They cannot. So, one of the things I talked about was health insurance. It is always a factor. It is always in play. This year, remember, we went over this, GLP-1s? That 1-line item went up $1.1 million. Anti-inflammatory drugs went up $5 million, $500,000. The cost of healthcare in general went up $1.8 million. That alone is well over the 2% we're allowed to increase. So, the state allows for a waiver, in our case, it's a $2 million waiver, the district can use at that point. That gets you to the 3.51. The third factor, enrollment. We have declined enrollment. It has been a saving grace that we have not had to hit programs. We have not had to do that yet, yet. We are expecting another decline again next year. And when you look enrollment, if anyone wants to do their own research and you go online and you look at enrollment, you're not going to see these numbers. These numbers don't include our preschoolers. If you put our preschoolers in there in 2024 and 2025, our enrollment looks like it's staying flat. But that would be an unfair comparison for you. I don't want to give you misinformation. So, that's why we take the preschoolers out. And you can see the K-12 enrollment is constantly declining. But we all know, that is not going to constantly decline for much longer. So, people always ask, a big reason enrollment drops? Interest rates, the housing market right now, the way a community functions, how many births there were 5 years prior, the fact that we have a lot of multi-generation households, and it takes about 15 years for those households to turn over with new students, and we're an aging community. This is the demographer, as well as current knowledge of what's going on in our country. You know, someone says, if I want to sell my house because I want to move here, and you're sitting with a 2.5% mortgage, and you tried to buy a new house with a 7% plus mortgage, that's hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars different per month. So, people are stuck, whether they want to move or not. So, that's real. So, it's affecting us with a decline in enrollment. And we talked about this last night. The reality is, our current homes with no new construction, our current homes house about 9,000 students. We're currently sitting at about 7,400. That means there's 1,600 students in the existing homes that should eventually come back. Now, we have new homes. That's another 1,600. So, you're not looking at just 1 hit. You're looking at a double hit. The problem is, we don't know when. We want to just go really quick. If you guys remember this, went over and just talked to you. I'm going to show you one example real quick. If we look down, this is first grade on the left. If we look down at the, let's see, the one that says 50. 53, 16.7. So, basically, this is a first-grade class. We currently are not looking to have classes of 25. But that's what you could do. To cut that down to a 2, you'd have 25 first graders in the class. And by the standards that we have, by the expectations of our community, we're not there right now. We do have some classes that do get there, but it's an odd thing when it happens. Now, we already cut, as we'll go, a lot of positions due to enrollment. But we have a problem when you have 7 different elementary schools and you get a situation where you have 37 in the bottom there. Can you cut 1 teacher from that and make it 1 section of 37 kids in first grade? Probably not. So, you leave it with 2, and you have low class size. That's what happens here. So, we've done a lot here. We have higher class size next year than we have this year. That's one of the things. The impact, again, is class size. It's constantly doing that. This year, the big change is, if we are too high in a particular school and we have new developments coming into that school, and we have no way to house and seat those kids in that school, but we have space in another school, we are going to move them to that other school. That is not desirable. Not desirable by the us, not desirable by the parent. The only other solution is hire more teachers at that point. And that isn't really an option for us. So, that's going to be a shift. We've done it before in very minimal cases, but we have neighborhoods with hundreds of homes that are coming online during the course of next year. We have to monitor this. So, that's a big deal. We constantly provide prioritizing our behavior supports, behavior in whatever social media has done to kids, whatever COVID did. It's a far more challenging situation than it used to be. We constantly, when we look at these things, how do we limit actual people losing their jobs? We're good at it, but we're not great at it. And we do have people losing their jobs. It's very upsetting, very tough time. And the big deal is, we try to limit disruption. Historical staffing. We have academic coaches. We've increased that because of our needs of our students. We've increased behavioral supports because of the needs of our students. We've increased instructional support because of the needs of our students. We've increased guidance councils because of the needs of our students. Special education program because of the needs of our students. And that's how we operate for the needs of our students. That's what we do. Quickly, this is the middle school. As you can see, we can't leave 17 kids in middle school classes. So, that's a place we have 10 reductions. 10 teachers being reduced at the middle school alone. The high school impact is not as easy, it's not as clean. Pete, Jeff Ruman, all the supervisors got together and put together a big package. Evelyn worked with them on that. And we were able to find some savings, some efficiencies. But it does have higher class sizes, right? That's what efficiencies are. You could do the same thing, but with more kids in a class. Big deal. Course enrollment. There were certain courses that we might have run in the past that were not running because the number of students who selected it was too low. Movement is another one. Normally, in the high school, a student can take a class. They realize at a certain point, I don't really want to take this class. I want to move it. I want to go into this class. Well, that class might be closed. And we don't usually close classes, but we're going to be closing classes. So, these are impacts that I know we'll hear about next year from families. Rightfully so. It's not the norm. But these are the things we have to do to manage the level of loss we've had year after year after year after year. And like before, we work to see where we can do things to still keep the humans, even if we have to cut the positions. We didn't cut programs. We didn't say, "There's no more AP art." We didn't do that. We collapsed some programs. Pete and his team and Evelyn, they do a great job of figuring out how to do this best. It's very fascinating, actually. But we didn't have to lose programs. Of courses, not programs. And we still want to make sure we support our kids. Overall, there's 41 positions. This is a cut of 41 positions. And we didn't get to the $3 million, even with 41 positions. Next. We have 3,100 new residences being built as we speak. You know where they are. And they are all over the place. And they're coming at different times. And they're coming at different speeds. All of a sudden, you look one way, there's nothing there. You look back the next day, and then all of a sudden, there's something going on there. That's happening right now. We have immediate impact from Northumberland Way. 1,700 homes being built. We have hundreds already. I think we're at hundreds. We have Heritage. Is that the one on? Heritage is the one on Henderson, Shocks? Henderson, Heritage on Shocks. That one is going to continuously produce. They're ready to rock and roll. They're going to be all coming to us next year. And the ones on Henderson Road, 177 units, they will all be occupied by the end of next school year, which means they will all be open, and we will start getting kids as early as registering for next school year this summer. Well, we can't tell you exactly how many they will come, what grades they will come to, what the impact will be. But we've already started slating where they'll go, because that's where we have seats. This whole thing has caused us to have a large committee. Last night was the first meeting of the 50-person committee to look and study how we're going to manage this over the next couple of years. If you don't plan for this, it's a big problem. You have to be proactive, knowing what we're knowing, all the data we have. Use that to make really smart decisions. I'm going to warn the Board. You're going to make smart decisions, and they're not going to be liked. You will make, every decision you make will be seen as a bad one by a portion of the community. You will not be able to avoid that. I encourage you to not try to avoid that. Try to do what the district needs you to do. The people that will be upset are the people who are impacted. They have every right to be upset. That is not strange or odd. In fact, it would be odd if they weren't upset. But you still have to move forward and do the right thing. We have 3 people leading this. Pete Rattin, Christina Vissi, and Rob Sears. They, 2 of them I saw before. They're here. And did a great job last night. A lot of work into this. It's going to take a lot of work. By next January, latest February, their task is to present to the Board some suggested moves for the Board so they can be made in time for September 26. This is the information we got from the town. This is the, what they give us to tell us what we should expect. That was actually the second version. The first version was just all zeros. Another just demonstrates these kids do not fit in the schools they are currently zoned for. They just don't fit. The giant number 4, they're all zoned for Brooks Crossing. Number 4 is currently all zoned. If all those kids in 1,700 homes go on top of the 520 kids that are already in Brooks Crossing, can't do it. Can't do it. So, that's the work that's being done. It's important. Facilities, another big deal. Another major impact on the budget. We have a 50-plus-year-old roof that they decided to drill holes into, 1,000 holes into the roof, to put solar on top of the 50-year-old roof. Can't say that was the best plan. That's the plan we got. That roof is end of life plus some. That roof needs to be fixed. That roof, we are estimating at a $4 million project, which includes the loss of solar, the removal of solar, the replacement of solar, and all that goes with that. Our reserve accounts right now are $4 million. You cannot liquidate your reserve accounts to nothing. You cannot do that. This is real. The operations committee has met. This has to be addressed. It's a $4 million expense of money you do not really have. Currently leaking. This is what it is. The other part right now, that's how our tennis courts look throughout. So, $250,000 fix. It'll be more money next year if you don't fix it this year. If you wait another year, it'll be more money. The question is, can you wait? The answer is yes. Can you wait on the roof? Yes. You risk causing far more expense and damage and harm, but you can say yes. It is always a choice. We've made the choice to not do all the facilities needs we had to, because we've been balancing kids, learning. And you have to start balancing now facilities. Yep?
Just a side note on our tennis courts. Board member Mike Mitchell got us in contact with the the New Jersey Tennis Association. They provided us, yep, they provided us a grant that we could apply for to have our tennis courts to have our tennis courts re-coated. And they're going to, we have six tennis courts. They're going to provide us eight thousand dollars per court, almost fifty thousand dollars to, um, to take, to help out with this project. And that just came about a couple of weeks ago. So thanks, Mike, for the contact. And that's a big, that's a big add for, a big, a big plus for this project because this project was coming directly out of our maintenance reserve.
That's all. Thank you very much, Mike, by the way. That's awesome. What's the difference? Were we just going to recoat? Did we have to pull anything up? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to get a new surface top.
So it would be, no matter what, if we got that granted, it's the same process?
Yep, same process.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
So we want to just outline for this to you. Right now, with the forty-one positions cut and the other things that we've done, we are currently six-hundred-thousand dollars short from balancing the budget. Okay? If we don't go spend any more money, which I understand, no one wants to tax anybody, we need to right now find three million more dollars to start the school year. Two million will pull from the reserves, which leaves you with only two million dollars with fourteen buildings. It's horrendous. Four million is horrendous. Two million is doubly horrendous. Then we have to pull two million from the operating budget. Then the six-hundred thousand, I'm still short. And now we can make, maybe move that eight-seventy-five to eight-twenty-five because now we need two-hundred thousand more for the tennis courts. Comes to about three million dollars. So if, this is the choice of the board, which is the choice of the board. My responsibility is to give you options. So here's your options. If you don't want to raise the money that the state has said you can, then we start talking about what you want to pick and choose to get to three million dollars. You can close the school and redistrict the kids. You can redistrict the entire K-eight population, where many kids will go to different schools than they go today. And because of all of the building, you will eventually need to reopen that building again. Massive disruption. It is the most disruption of the choices, but it's also the most lucrative of the choices. You can eliminate all courtesy busing. That means no hazardous routes. Specifically, that means five-year-olds who live at Royal Oaks will have to cross Route One to get to school. They will not be provided transportation. That is legal. You are legally allowed to make that decision. Again, very lucrative decision. We will save one and a half million dollars off the bat, and then you could start charging for subscription busing. We estimate you'll make at least two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that one's worth about one-point-seven-five, gets you a little more than halfway there. If you don't like that one, you can get rid of all of our security. That one's about eight-hundred-and-fifty grand, and we won't have the South Brunswick police, and we won't have any of our security guards or our director. I don't think that one will go very well either. The next one, which is usually more popular, is just fire the administrators. It's lucrative, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars each. We need about twenty-five of them, which is half. And we could figure that out with half the number of administrators. I will tell you, the other half will quit, but you, you could do that. So you'd have, if you fire half, you'll actually get fifty out of the deal. That's a really good deal, actually. That's a, that's a surprise little nugget there. You can reduce more certificated staff. All the future certificated staff will cut right into programs and up your class size even more. But you can do that. Those are options. You can reduce sports. You can pick and choose any of the high school sports. The smaller sports might only be ten grand, and the larger ones could go a hundred grand or more. Your big ones are football and marching band. I say target those first. That will be very friendly for the community. Those are your choices. Because if you're only going to go for the little ones, you need three million dollars. Don't mess around with a small sport. Go big. You got to go big here. You need three million dollars. You can eliminate all of middle school athletics completely. Not that much money, but it's one-hundred-and-eighty thousand. That will have a major impact, of course, on your high school teams. And Mike will not be talking about a championship anything anymore because they will not have a place to start. You can reduce extracurriculars, about three to four thousand per club. That's basically all the clubs. You can cut them all, then some. You can cut half the administrators and all the clubs, and you'll get, just about get there. You can eliminate the elementary G and T program, which affects two-hundred students. That saves you quarter of a million. There's other ways to do it, other ways to skin this cat, but they all kind of feel this way. That's just where you are. This is what other districts are doing. They are doing those things. They are cutting middle school sports. They do not have banned and music programs like we have. Not even close. As I said the other night, we have advanced choir in elementary schools. Now, if we cut advanced choir, you'd only save about one-twenty, twenty percent of one staff member. And you'd have all those people involved in advanced choir sitting in the front rows, ready to tell you how they feel about cutting advanced choir. And so on, and so on, for any one of those things you pick. That's the way it works. Not saying that should be the reason you don't do it. The reason you shouldn't do it is because we take care of kids here. That's why you shouldn't do it. The byproduct is angry people, but that shouldn't be the reason you do or don't do something. You should do it or don't do it because it's right. And if you can. There will be a time where maybe you don't have a choice, where you don't have an option. You either fix the roof or don't. That could be your choice. You happen to be in a situation where you do have some options this year. Our recommendation is what you voted on last meeting. So if you do all those things, I'm not, I just, I'm just, these are just, we can read this later. This is just the impact of what you do if you do all those things or any of those things. Each one comes with things we don't like, things we don't want, bad things. The biggest thing we're dealing with is we can't do new things. We can't talk about, like, how do we do this better? We only talk about how do we do it equal or better with less money? That's the conversation we have, not just we have more money. And I know there's people in the audience that have asked for things that the answer is no. Uh-oh. I don't know what she asked for, but you can have it. You get it. I can't do crying. Again, just all stuff we know. So what are we maintaining? We're still doing all this. This is why we're here. This is why the people you pay have jobs. No matter what job they do in the district, they do their job so we can do these things. And David has been a mastermind of getting the money in operations as low as we can get it so we can keep the money here. We don't want to be known for having the best, most maintained bushes. We want good maintained bushes, but that's not what we want to be known for. We want to be known for doing right for kids. So what Dave does with Brian, they figure out how to do things as inexpensively as possible. But you saw, you didn't hear us at all talk about custodial or maintenance cuts. We've done that every other year. We've done secretaries. We've done other things. We can't do that. We're not even proposing it. We need to stay here and keep our money here. So the Rises program was a huge highlight for us. That program went over last time, but, you know, awesome, we're getting... Raf, you're here? You're still here? How many tuition students, Raf?
Oh, we have six confirmed.
Six districts pay us to have their kid in our program. And Jamie's back there. Stacy and Jamie, they're the principal and assistant principal of that school. That program takes a lot out of people. But they are absolutely killing it over there. Fantastic job and a huge thing. So good, we're doing it again, and this time we're expanding to the middle school. That was a three-hundred-thousand-dollar add to the budget. One of the few adds to the entire budget. We do that because that's what our kids need, but in this case, we're also going to probably make some of that money back. That's pretty huge. Keeping kids in district is good for the kid and good for the wallet. Mostly good for the kid. And bringing in tuition students is very helpful. So the rest of this is for the board to just peruse at your own rate. We asked the schools and the, um, and leadership, just give us some proud moments or highlights. Not going to go over them all, but I did put them all onto one, well, she lowered us, put them all onto one page for each group. And there's so much that we are still proud of, that we do. We thought it was important. We always just talk about money and horror and pain. Even with all that, the people, the teachers, the staff, everybody in this district makes it so all those things get to keep happening year after year after year. Even when right now we're telling people they don't have a job, people still come forward and still try to do the right thing no matter what. That is a pride that you can never get too much of. Now the big thing. The tax impact, as I've shared, the state gave us a tax incentive aid. The state has a formula which we hate with a passion. The formula has told us you are spending not enough money. South Brunswick, you don't spend enough money. Now, we only don't spend five-point-one million dollars. Other districts like Toms River, they said, you don't spend enough money. You have to spend one-hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars more. And other number, crazy numbers out there in the state. We're kind of in a modest place because last year, the board did what you did and because we've reduced our operation costs. So we're in as good a place as we could be in, in a place that's still lost so much over the years. Anyway, what it basically does, it allows you to go to adequacy. You can go to five-point-one million. That would cost the district four-point-eight million. The other two-hundred-and-fifty thousand would come from the state. Very nice of them to give us five percent of that money back. That's being sarcastic. The fifty million, fifty thousand per million dollars. Thank you. So this is just the way this goes. We're allowed to do this this year. It's allowed from the DOE. Actually, the only part that is not legally allowed until the budget passes is the fifty thousand dollars per million. That has to be approved at the budget level. The rest of this does not. So here's what it looks like. These numbers went down from our last conversation because ratable got adjusted in a positive way. So they came down. So anything in the green is at the option of the board. The pink were prior years. The number that Dave likes to point out to us is all the way to the right. The district has not seen big hits to taxes. Last year was the first time that there was a decent-sized hit to taxes. So it is unfortunate that the state has done this two years in a row. I was speaking to a legislator today and said, why can't they give us three years to put this into place so districts can actually manage this? Because someone thought of it two months ago, and that's how it came about. This wasn't some grandiose plan. It just came about. It was April. It wasn't even two months ago. That's how this happens. It's crazy. So anyway, at the last meeting, the board voted tentatively to go to the seven-point-two percent. That will have an impact of the average home of three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. That would put the six-year average for the average taxpayer in South Brunswick, that they would pay eighty-seven dollars more over those six years. It's not horrible, but it's not good either. Not going to stand up here and say that's an easy decision. Not going to stand up here and say, no-brainer. Schools keep the town the healthiest. Above all else in this town, it's the schools. We're the biggest employer, all the money. That's what it is. Hate to see an increase, but this is what we need to do to do all those things that we do, to keep all the things in place. I don't, not as a good, as a good level as it's been. Still, everything's being declined. But we're trying to make sure you have a roof, literally a roof over your head next year. Safety and all the other things that we've talked about over the years. This is what you're going to be asked to vote upon. This is the final slide, and that is the money. And we can open up for questions from the board before we take a seat. Again, it's nothing too new. We did have some recommendations for some slides, so we did try to put those in there. Anything?
Any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
Let me up again, the color. So that dropped, I think it's important to note. The three-twenty-five did drop from three-thirty-five, three-fifty. Yeah, what it was. So they reran the numbers and that dropped. At the annual tax impact.
So I'm going to jump on that, which is twenty-seven dollars a month. It's a, to go to seven, we tend to freak out when we look at seven-point-two-oh percent. That's such a high percentage rate. And it is. But when you break down the numbers, it's twenty-seven dollars a month for the annual household. And we had so many years of, we did not only not pay taxes, our taxes went down. Like, I mean, I'm sorry, we did not increase our taxes. They actually went down. So, um, Dave, that eighty-seven dollars is over, averaging out over six years, right? What our, what our taxes went up. One thing I want to let the board know, we got to keep in mind, because the state is so... They do things whenever they feel like it, at the last second that they feel like it, that this allowing us to go past a two-percent cap, because if they said, too bad, you can only go the two-percent cap, we couldn't even cover our cost of living expenses. We would be in major trouble. So they said, okay, we can go past the two-percent cap and then add the health insurance thing, and then we can go up to five million. That's right now. Unfortunately, because the state is so unpredictable, it's one of those things that if we don't do this now, we might not even come close to this opportunity next year. And if we're not given this opportunity, we are in major trouble since right now our reserves is four million?
Yes.
Okay. So if we don't build that up, and then the state next year in their infinite wisdom says, yeah, we're going back to the two-percent cap, and we've already used the piddly little four million we have, we're selling buildings. I mean, I don't know if we actually will, but we're going to be put in that bad of a position. So we have to look at the big picture here, not just right now, and not the scary two, seven-point-two, because that is a scary number there.
But the other part, Laura, people, like last year, were confused. Seven-point-two percent is not an increase on people's taxes.
Right.
That's an increase in revenue.
Right.
So if someone looked at their tax bill right now, let's say they paid ten, ten, ten thousand dollars, doesn't mean they're paying seven-thousand, seven-hundred dollars more. Doesn't mean that at all. It has to do with their assessed value, not what they pay in taxes. It's seven-point-two percent. The average family, the average home will see a three-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar increase, you know, give or take a few dollars depending on how the ratables come in at the end. But that's pretty much an important distinction.
On the school tax.
On revenues, just on the school tax.
Not the whole property.
Oh, yeah. I can't, I have no control of what the town does.
I want to make it clear, that's on your school tax.
But this is, remember, if seven-point-two percent is the revenues, it is not the increase of someone's taxes.
Well, we, when we look at that roof, I'm just amazed that they decided ten years ago or eight years ago, when did we put that solar on? Eight years ago. Who puts a solar roof on a fifty-year, uh, solar panels on a fifty-year-old roof with holes? Like, to me, and I've stated this before, replacing that roof is a non-negotiable. We have got to replace that roof this year. We have got to. Before we have kids in there and the roof caves in and we're really in a lot of trouble.
Actually, I, I thought about that for a while. That was before Scott came on.
Right.
That was after Dr. McCartney left. And there was no money left in the general fund, from what I remember, to even fix that roof because Dave and Scott brought that general fund, excuse me, my apologies, the capital fund, brought it up to fifteen million. Did you bring it up too, the capital reserve? Yeah, so there was no money in capital reserve left.
Which will put us in the same position if we don't act on this now.
I thought about that.
Yeah, that will put us in the same position.
Deepa?
Can you go to the tax incentives slide? So where it says districts can go to adequacy, five-point-one million dollars. And if you flip back to the, to the next slide, does that mean, sorry, I'm looking at this, okay, so does that mean that we can, we are per, you know, we are allowed to go to, what, four, somewhere between three-point-five and four-point-two?
You're, you're allowed to go anywhere from negative twenty to seven-point-two. You're legally allowed to do any numbers you want to do up to seven-point-two.
Okay, so then what's this five-point-one million?
The five-point-one million gets you above the statutory two-percent cap and any waivers.
Oh, okay.
So the three-point-five-one, which is the four-point-six, that's the statutory amount. They wrote this plan to allow you to go to adequacy, which is above that statutory number. That's where those numbers come from. This is all, Deepa, it's all formulaic. The formula in the software tells us this.
Okay, and, sorry, and the next question was the state reimbursements. What, is that the state reimbursing us?
Yes.
$50,000 for every million?
Every million of the 5.1 million.
That is, if we raise it, they would give us, give it?
If you raise it, if you build it, they will come, yes.
What is, what sentence was that?
If you, if you raise the million dollars.
That's a movie, honey.
If you raise the million dollars, they will give you $50,000 for every million. So, they saying you're allowed to go to 5.1, of which 250,000 of that will be the state money. You're allowed to raise the other 4.8.
So, they're saying that we will give you money if you get more money from your people?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want, I mean, I was just trying to like.
Yeah.
Think about it.
And I'll send you Field of Dreams to watch.
Yeah, we'll watch it, we'll watch it.
No, I'm just trying to break this down in my simple head. So, that's what they're saying. They're saying we will, the state will, the state is saying, if you get money from your people, then we will give you some more money.
5% back of what you get from your people. This year, one-time hit.
Oh, so, okay, okay, okay. So, is the formula ad hoc again, like last year, or is it?
No, worse than last year. Literally is just flew out of thin air.
Okay, and it's not like for future, it's just for this year?
No, 100% not for future. Well, I can't say 100% anything. I don't know what they'll do next year. We didn't know they were doing this this year.
Yeah.
Rajesh?
Then Julie goes for she, and then I'll go.
I just wondered about last year when we were doing the budget. You mentioned that we, our bond would expire, we wouldn't. Could you mention that and how that affects our budget this year?
I'll put Dave on the call for this one.
So, your, your debt service fund went from almost 3.5 million down to 1.8 million. And next year, the 1.8 million is completely wiped off, it's zero. So, you won't be carrying any debt in your tax levy next year at all. But we don't, we don't collect those funds. Those funds go straight to your township. So, we don't see that 1.8 million in our operating budget. That 1.8 million is collected at the township and paid through the township.
So, why do we line item that on our budget then?
Because it's, it's, those are funds that we took to build the high school. So, there, it's kind of like a mortgage, you know? You, you have the mortgage, you have to pay it off. It's just that the taxpayers in the community are paying that tax or that mortgage directly to the township.
Okay, but then when that's finished, that's almost a plus.
It is a plus. We saw, we saw, we saw, and we saw a little bit of a benefit from having that roll off this year. If we, if we still carried the debt service, your total base budget would be more in the 4.5 million or 145 million. It was about 3.5 million that rolled off. So, your, your total base budget would have been higher, and the 325 would have been, obviously, a little bit more.
Okay, so, looking at this, our, our budget last year, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I read that, it was 164.7, is that?
No. No, the, what we're looking here at is your, your general fund, like, how we operate the district, our Fund 11, all of our expenses, our salaries, anytime we pay for anything that impacts classrooms, special education, any, any services, building, all of our buildings, our transportation, healthcare, our whole general budget, our general fund is $164 million. What, of that 164 million, 141 million of it is supported through the tax levy. Right? So, that's your tax levy. So, our budget, our operating budget this year is 164 million. We have a special revenue fund, grants and federal, federal grants that we receive and state grants that equate to our preschool. Actually, increased that quite a bit this year. And the preschool has been a godsend with regards to assisting our, our budget and our operating budget. But that's a $9 million special revenue fund addition. So, you have an $11 million special revenue fund that's, that operates out of what we call a Fund 20. It's very regulated and restricted on how and what we can charge there. And then you have your debt service fund and a total base budget of 177 million. So, all of those numbers added together equal your total base in the budget column. And all of the, all of the numbers on your right equate to the tax impact that's in the community right now.
Okay, what was our budget last year, just out of curiosity? What, what were we at last year?
You were hovering right around the 160 or 158 million, 158 general fund. And your total.
We're doing an increase of 12 million this year?
No, 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 no. You're, you're increasing nine. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on our, our total base.
The, the increase this year, the net increase.
9.5 million.
The net increase this year is 9.5 million minus 1.8 million, which was the debt service that came off. That's your net increase. If you do 7.2. So, it's about seven.
So, we're increasing about 9 million?
Nine and a half million in the general fund and 1.8 million off less in the debt service. All taxes.
So, if that's true, wouldn't it be beneficial to just go to 5.78? In essence, we're looking.
In my opinion, my only, my only recommendation to the board is 7.2. That doesn't mean you have to agree. I'm just saying, that's my recommendation.
So, just to begin. To get back on that point, and I think we have discussed this a lot prior, right in the finance committee. So, the additional revenue that we generate, again, the goal is to put that in the capital reserves, right, because that is extremely low. And we know our infrastructure is aging, and we will need definitely more, more funds. So, it's an opportunity. So, that's, that's again, that's again a goal. And can we make that as an administration goal? Because I know the money goes into the operating account, and we need to move it at the June, July timeframe. So, can we make that as an admission goal? That additional revenue we generate about 2 million roughly goes to cap, capital reserves?
Do a little better than that, Rajesh. Why don't, why don't, I think the board has told us.
Yep.
Was very clear.
Yep.
That if we do this, we are putting money into the roof and the tennis courts, no questions asked.
Exactly.
So, that, that, that condition of the, of the money is agreed upon.
Okay.
I have a question about the free and reduced lunch.
Can you, Mike?
The free and reduced lunch?
Yes.
You know, we had the, so, in the last couple of years, we were, you know, pretty stable at 12%, right? If I remember this. 12%, 12, right?
Yes.
And then we saw an increase to 18%.
Almost 19.
Right, so, will that come under like Title I grants? Like, what is it, is that impacting our?
So, so, the reality is that should eventually.
Yeah.
Hit the formula and do something.
Correct.
So, it hasn't hit it.
Because I thought.
But it hasn't hit yet.
Wasn't it one of the variables that the free and reduced lunch was a?
It is a variable of the formula. That might eventually help, but they roll over a six-year average of all that information. So, it doesn't help immediately.
Oh, so you mean that we need to be consistent at 18% for six years?
No, it's an average. You don't have to be consistent. They just take whatever the numbers are, and they roll them into six-year averages.
Why?
Oh, don't, no, no. No, there's no why. There's no why the budget is, there's no why the state does what the state does. No, 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 Scott doesn't have that ability. Because they are the state, and they said so.
No, the reason I ask why is because at this point, you are, you are servicing a population that is on an 18%.
I gotta make it worse for you. If you got 1,000 new students in next year, you're not getting the money for 1,000 new students. It'll be 1,000 new students averaged over six years. That is the way this works. That's the answer. Why that is the answer, that is the answer, because it's the answer. I'm not being rude. It's very frustrating for me because I hate that these are the answers. They're not logical. They do some things one year over one year, and some years six over years, over six years. It's a, it's a problem with the formula. Hopefully, they'll fix the formula. Hopefully, but we've been saying hopefully for years. And now the legislators are basically, they basically said, we are done. We're not doing the formula until there's a new governor, and we hear what that governor wants to do. So, that means at the next school year, maybe, but doubtful.
Okay, so I, I have another question, sorry, this is the last one that I will ask. So, we have this whole housing plan that has come from the township or whoever has given us that information, right? So, then these are all these 3,000 homes that are being built.
Yes.
Let's say, you know, we have, even if we have like 10% whatever of influx of students. So, there is no, the state doesn't have a plan or doesn't have a logic to.
You can stop there. They do not have a plan, they do not have logic.
So, they don't have a plan or a logic to service an, an immediate need of a township that has seen, seen an influx or is anticipating an influx to, you know, provide public education to those students who, who are in that.
They do, if your district is Lakewood.
Right.
If your district is not Lakewood, then you have nothing.
What is in Lakewood?
They give Lakewood a money every year, and other districts that have asked for the same money, because they've had problems like you've described, get nothing from the state. So, the answer to your question is, no, there is no plan for when you have an influx of enrollment. Except for to factor it in to the formula, which takes enrollment over a six-year average.
So, you're, you're expected to provide busing, facilities, everything? No increase in, all the transportation, everything? And how, how are you expected to service them?
Yes.
Transportation?
And here we are. And here you have it, folks.
I'll throw a month out, I think, and Scott, correct me, September, Senator Gopal was very forceful, and we were all behind him, that they were going to re-engineer that school funding formula. We, we were there cheering him on, and it fell flat on its face. And really, the bottom line, it is a political situation. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Until the new governor gets appointed, whoever that may be, we might still be fighting this for the next 10 years. Who knows? But nothing's going to happen between now and that governor getting appointed. It's just not. So, we can't depend on anything other than those, that presentation.
I think we, I think we go from like struggling to keep the district as vibrant as it is right now and growing the district, because you look at the numbers with Edison, they have three times the amount of enrollment that we do. Therefore, they're getting more money. So, your objective here is to kind of work a, you know, it's like a tightrope. It feels like a tightrope, you know, where you want South Brunswick to grow and mature and, and maybe someday be as, as large as Edison and get that money from the state. But you also have residents who are on very fixed budgets, who are struggling with the economy that doesn't have any real clear change in sight as well. So, you know, how do we tell our constituents, 7.2, fine? I think we have to be walking that tightrope and making a prudent decision to say, well, let's go for 5.2. And, 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 you know, yes, that's not going to solve all our problems, but we have next year with the hope that we will get some clarification from the state to give us the, you know, the extra that we will need, or however they did their mojo this year, their crazy mojo. You know, we, we have, we're walking a tightrope here as the board. And, and I just wondered what you think about how do we talk to our constituents? An average homeowner, it, an average homeowner, this is not clear. It's not clear to most people watching tonight. You have people in Kendall Park with homes that range about anywhere from 300 to 500,000, and that's not even what average homeowner is. That's probably high compared to assessed value. Because I know what I live in, in Kendall Park, and my assessed value is only 170,000. So.
That, that's good for you.
I know that's good for me, but that's not good for everyone. That's what I'm trying to tell you, the discrepancy here is.
So, Julie, wait before.
We have a large amount of residents who live in larger homes, who are going to take the brunt of this. So, they have to be sure this is what they want.
It's the price that, I mean, that somebody pays to live in a.
Larger home that's assessed at a larger value.
So, so, and I wanted, I wanted to put this out. Since, Julie, since, this is the average home, assessed home, not what we can get for, because you're right, there's such a big difference. But if you look at the 5.02, so if we voted on 5.02, we would raise your taxes 258 dollars a year. Okay? If we look at the 7.20, we raise it 325 dollars a year. So, all's the people that are destitute are saving is 75 dollars a year. So, the only, instead of paying 27 dollars a month at 7.20, they will be paying 21 dollars and 50 cents a month.
I think we should get, I think we should get accurate figures from the municipality about this. It's unfair to.
Yeah. Wait, at least let her finish talking, let her finish talking.
I was just going to sit down, but what, what did you just say? Sorry, you want to get accurate figures about what?
From the municipality, about how the taxes are drawn off of.
To help, we have that. We presented that.
That's what is here.
That is the accurate amount of money.
Those are accurate.
What is an average house?
$200,000.
Assessed, assessed, assessed at 200,000.
Julie, 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 listen. Julie, you've been in the town a long time.
I have.
When was the last, you said your house is 170,000 assessed?
Not anymore, it's a little bit higher than that, but that's not the value.
Wait, Dave, 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 no, one second. Julie, Julie, how much higher than 170 is your house assessed?
178.
Okay.
When was it assessed?
No, no, just let me, let me finish.
Please, let him do it.
Please, let me just finish this. One conversation, let me just try and help. You have a house that's assessed at 178. Just as a guess, if you put your house on the market right now, what do you think it would sell for?
Somewhere around 400.
Around what?
Around 400.
Okay. So, the tax, the 325 dollars, the way that number came out is from a formula from the township. We don't guess. That 325 is for a house assessed at 200,000, assessed. Don't care what it's worth. Your house at 178, you'll have less than 325 dollars in tax.
I'm not worried about me.
I'm not saying you're worried, I'm trying to do the math, just the math.
But think about what you mentioned, is that we have a district. One of the problems is we have a lot of people who are older, seniors, living in homes that they're not willing to, to move to due to the problem with the interest rates. Those people are on very fixed budgets. So, we have to think about how that impacts them.
We do, but most of those elderly people aren't living in our million-dollar homes across the street from the high school. Most of those people are living in a. Well, if they're living in million-dollar homes, Julie, come on, let's think about this. They're not living on a fixed income and making, paying the taxes they're paying on those houses. Forget these, but just the property taxes, paying the PSE and G that they're going to pay on those gigantic houses across those. They're not living on a fixed income if they're living across the street from the high school. They're just not, our, our fixed income people are probably living, my guess is, in our Kendall Park areas.
Well, you have some in Monmouth Junction.
Some, yeah.
Small, tiny houses.
Right, smaller, tiny houses.
That are assessed at 150.
Exactly. So, so, I get what you're saying. I totally agree with what you're saying, but I also think that people that are living in our larger homes, which I personally could not afford, and I have been here my whole life, they're not living on fixed income. You're not, I, I would bet my paycheck that I get here on this board that they are not, they're not on fixed incomes living.
What if we, what if we went door to door and said?
Oh, come on. Well, we can't, we can't do that. I see your theory, we can't do that.
Just calm down. This is just hypothetical. If you went door to door and said, are you in favor of your taxes going up 7.2% this year due to the school budget? I would say, wager to say, that 90 to 95% would say, no, that's too much.
I, I have a comment.
I disagree with you.
Look out here. Hold on, I have a comment.
Wait, what?
We have gone through this for the past four months. Four months. I'll even say five months. Who do you see out here? That's your community. There's nobody here saying, not one person, two gentlemen, I apologize, I don't know if you will or not, but there's nobody here. So, if they were that upset, they should be here.
Do these teachers live in our district?
What does that have to do with that?
No, I thought that.
I'm not talking about the teachers. I'm talking about the community. If the community was upset about this.
They haven't heard.
Yes, they have. How much more are we? Yes, they have. How much more are we supposed to advertise that this is happening? Every year, a budget takes place for the school board. In every single district in the state of New Jersey, six hundred-plus districts go through this every year. Everybody that pays taxes knows that there's a percentage of their property tax that goes directly to the schools.
And Lisa, we're gonna let her have her opinion on what she says here.
Absolutely, thank you, Laura.
We're just gonna let it go.
But I am just saying, if there was a survey to be had, this would be it.
Okay, so we're gonna, Julie have her opinion, and Rajesh, you had your hand up.
Yeah, no, no, I was, I mean, of course, increasing taxes is not one of the best thing to do or vote on, but I think, what, if I can summarize, and Scott and Dave, you can correct me, if we really had to, we can, based on the proposals you have already provided, the forty-one positions and some of the cuts around, we can manage the budget. But we cannot do roof, we cannot fix the tennis courts, we cannot keep the existing class size as is. So I think, if I summarize, with staff eliminations, can we manage? Barely. But we can't do anything else. So if community is wondering why not three point five, or why not something else, and why seven point two, in return, what they're getting is, they're gonna get a new roof, so that the school's infrastructure is upgraded, they get longevity, we're not cutting any of the safety programs that you were putting up, which was on the chopping blocks. So again, safety, if I remember, is the core to the community, then comes academics, then sports, and then the other extracurricular activities, so we are maintaining everything. So again, if I have to go out and say why the tax increase is, in return, you're gonna get a roof, which is required, which cannot be postponed. I think that's what I would have to say. And again, your point was pretty valid, why not five point seventy-eight then? And why seven point two? And again, the only, only better way for me to say to the community is, by just twenty or thirty-odd bucks, if we can increase our capital reserves, that financially puts us in a much better position to face the headwinds coming up next year, which we have no idea.
Right.
Because unless, and again, all the drastic proposals that Scott and Dave put, actually, I have a gut feeling will have to be considered next year, be it closing of schools, or bussings, or sports, which I know is not popular, but eventually, it has to be. And this, so that's the best bet, is increase the cap reserve, let's be in the best position to face the oncoming next year's challenges, which we have no idea what they will be. So that's what I would summarize it all.
Good summary. That is correct. Okay, any other questions, comments?
I just agree with everything Rajesh said, that's a very good point, actually.
Well, Mr. David?
Next on our, oh, I need to do a, an adjustment to consent agenda. We need to add a motion, Mrs. President, can I get a motion to adjust the consent agenda?
I have motion, can I have a second? Mike? So we're- We're gonna add motion one point one nine to the consent agenda. So be it resolved, that the South Brunswick Township Board of Education hereby accepts with deep appreciation and sincere gratitude the letter of retirement submitted by Scott Fetter, effective August, effective August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, from the position of superintendent of schools. The board extends its heartfelt thanks to Mr. Fetter for his outstanding leadership, unwavering dedication, and many years of exemplary service to the South Brunswick Township District, its students, staff, and the community. He has been transformational presence in our schools, fostering a culture of excellence, kindness, and innovation that has positively impacted all of us in meaningful ways. The South Brunswick community wishes you, Mr. Fetter, oh my God, the best in your future endeavors, and please have a budget-free retirement. Man, that was a lot harder than I thought. And I've known about it a little while.
You all, please make sure you pass this budget, pass this consent agenda, please.
Okay, before we get to the consent agenda, next order of business is our board committee and liaison reports. Policy, Ms. Khan? Okay, finance, Ms. Rogers?
Yes, thank you, President Hernandez. Sorry. I know, just, I'm all choked up. I've been with Scott for a long time, so it-
You just screwed me up, you really screwed me up.
So the finance committee met this past Tuesday, we went through that entire presentation that you just saw. That was myself, President Hernandez, Ms. Khan, and Mr. Sony were present, along with Dr. Mem, sorry, Suzanne Luckborn, and Kim, and Dave, sorry, and Steve, there was a lot of people there. So we went through the entire presentation, the committee did approve at that time. We passed the committee to go to the seven point two zero. Committee approved based on the presentation that was given, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Krishna, so for operations? Nothing, he's not here, but we really just touched on the roof. Dr. Raj?
No updates at this time.
Okay, any liaison reports? Okay.
Yeah, I have one. So for the high school, I attended the Joanne Kirk's Art Gallery, it was wonderful. Mr. Fetter also touched upon it, so it was my pleasure to be at that event. I took lots of pictures, and it was, yeah, I sent you some, so it was wonderful. And for all of the board members who may have missed it, please don't miss it next year. Some of this art is just stunning, absolutely stunning, so please try and make it next year if you didn't see it this year.
She was there, I wasn't able to make it, so she was my eyes, and as she was touring, she was sending me pictures as she was going through, it was awesome. Dr. Raj?
Quick update on the cricket club, South Brunswick High School Cricket Club, they played against West Windsor, Plainsboro, and they won both their matches. So flying start to the cricket club, and I was at one of their matches, it was awesome. So much of cricketing talent, I was actually taken aback that they got both the matches against a well-established team.
That's awesome, awesome, awesome. Anyone else? Okay, so then, next up, old business, there's none at this time. New business, there is none at this time. Our next portion of the board meeting is public comments, this is on any topic. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Complete copies of policy zero one six seven, which governs this portion of the meeting, are available to the public at the auditorium entrance, online, or by contacting the board office. To permit the fair and orderly expression of comments, we ask that the participants be recognized by the presiding officer and preface comments by announcing his or her name, place of residence, and group affiliation, if appropriate, and by signing the signing sheet, completing the signing sheet up at the podium. Please print legibly, or we may be unable to document your name for the permanent record. Each statement may be made by participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic. Mr. Palowski will indicate when you have fifteen seconds remaining. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participants may address or question board members. No discussion between a participant and respondent shall exceed the three-minute time limit. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. Once all questions and comments from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education may respond, or respond via email in the most timely and effective manner available. All questions and comments made will be noted. Mr. Palowski, do we have anybody preregistered?
We have no preregistrations at this time.
Are there anyone in the audience that would like to have a public comment? Please come down to the podium, please. We open, we are very open to diverse comments, we are not open to disrespect. And I just say that before every comment. Please come on down. Sure, no problem. You wanna slide over so you up next? You can move over so you can go up next.
Just takes a while to get here.
No worries, no worries.
I know, they know me, they know me, you know me. Okay, my name is John O'Sullivan, thirty-three, Wexford Drive, Mom and Junction, New Jersey, and I live across the street, a little bit from the high school, and I do not live in a million-dollar home. I wish, okay? A much newer development has, you didn't clarify that. A much newer development, it's all for a million dollars. I wish, I had something to say, but I see the superintendent will be leaving. I wish him luck, it's not fun being up on a board. I have had experience from council, I know what it's like. I was gonna say something about his salary of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, especially when the governor of the state of New Jersey, which I checked out today, makes a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, said salary. So I guess when you go out looking for a new superintendent, I hope you have money in the budget for this now, because that's an expense. I hope you have it in there now. I just hope we don't go, in my opinion, crazy paying two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a superintendent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Robert Williams, Ten Jeffrey Circle, right here in Dayton. I thank you all for your time and effort. I mean, it's probably a very thankless job. I mean, yes, you pursued it, but I mean, I'm sure you didn't know what you were getting in when you did. I've kinda missed a lot of the meetings here, I was here more last year, and I apologize, I should be more active in the community, but things came up this year, and I just couldn't. We all trust you to do the right thing, alright? But I have more questions than I do statements. We were mentioning, or you brought up, all these new houses that are coming up, alright? But tax revenue comes in with it. I don't know if that's been factored in, I don't expect an answer, alright? I'm just kinda like going, I mean, I did it down, I thought somebody said seventeen hundred houses?
Do you mind if I, I'll respond to that for you?
Sure, sure.
Alright, so the state of New Jersey in two thousand and twelve put a cap on the amount of money you're allowed to spend on schools. You're allowed to increase the amount of money from the taxes at the local level by two percent. So if your taxes are a hundred million, let's say, that the town pays, the next year, you're allowed to go to a hundred and two million. It does not matter if a billion dollars of new taxes came into the town. What happens, I just did this last night with another group, because this is a complicated issue. What happens if more money comes into the town? It reduces the amount of tax everybody pays, it doesn't come to us. So for example, if you were, if you were paying for a classroom of learning, and there were twenty students in the class, and the class cost a hundred thousand dollars, each student's part would be five thousand dollars. If we add ten more kids to that, now there'd be thirty kids who get to share in the same hundred thousand dollars. The costs didn't go up, there's just more people paying. That's what happens when new houses come in, because of the law in the state of New Jersey. It doesn't give us access to any other funding that comes in, it just reduces. If you saw on the early slides, even when you saw there was an increase of two to three percent in the levy, it was still a decrease in people's taxes. So if you look in the first one up there, twenty, in twenty twenty, we raised the taxes by two point nine, we raised the revenues by two point nine three percent, which was probably about two and a half million dollars. But it resulted in a hundred-dollar reduction in the average person's tax.
I'm actually following you pretty well, yeah. So what you're basically saying, and I'm sure I'm way off, but I did a back, whoa, sorry. I did a back-endup envelope calculation, and I'm assuming, did I hear seventeen hundred new houses coming in?
Thirty-one hundred and seventy-seven.
That's even worse. At ten grand a head, at ten grand a head, we're talking, I did seventeen million, it's gonna be double that. So everybody's gonna get a tax break next year? Our taxes are going down?
So one of the things that is integral with the school funding formula is the ratables of the town. So when all of those houses hit the market, when those real estate sales hit your ratables, your ratables are gonna shoot up. And when your ratables shoot up and your town value's worth more, that also decreases your payable taxes, but it decreases the impact of our taxes on you as a taxpayer. So if your ratables, if the ratables of a town, so a few years ago, actually, in the year twenty twenty, there were three or four warehouses that sold out on Route one thirty that were built for, say, ten dollars a square foot, they sold for two hundred a square foot, and that, that amount of sale revenue hit your ratables, and your ratables jumped up almost a billion dollars. So we were able to raise taxes, because your town value was so much higher, it actually dropped your taxes, because the value of the town was so much, increased so much. So hopefully, when all of these homes hit your market, your ratables will shoot up again, and our tax, our two percent tax on the levy won't have such a dramatic impact, or a more favorable impact on your tax bill.
But the issue is, we won't get the money to do things the school needs.
Right.
It doesn't work that way, which is the problem.
Well, I know that taxes, at least sixty to seventy percent are allocated to the schools. So I mean, no matter how the revenue goes around, I should say the taxes, because it's not really revenue. Or you might look at it as revenue, I see it as taxes. Sixty to seventy percent of that's still going to the schools, so-
That number will shift.
Okay, well, only if the county takes more. Alright, any idea why Edison and New Brunswick, and North Brunswick, got such a high amount compared to us? That doesn't make sense, you don't know, really?
Question of the century.
No.
But you guys, don't we have, like-
You're joining the deeper questions now.
Yeah, you're joining, like, and not that we haven't inquired.
Oh, no, 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 I agree, yeah.
I have a theory, if you wanna see me after the meeting.
You know, I probably, I just ate, so we probably don't wanna do that, alright? The roof, fifty years, yeah, that's a long time. But I mean, somebody put, somebody made a decision, and the builder put the solar panels on there. From a construction, I'm not a construction guy, but somebody made a real big mistake. There's no insurance, there's no lawsuit, I mean, it's-
So that, the warranty on that whole project was over, you have like a one-year warranty on the installation, and then you're done. So what happened in two thousand and sixteen, this, the district engaged with a company to do an energy savings improvement project. Twenty-seven million at the time, largest, largest project in the state of New Jersey for a school district. And that, what happened was, the essence of all of the projects around the district didn't have an architect's signature. They dealt directly with a vendor, and the vendor, in their true wisdom, identified the roof and was able to work with buildings and grounds and business administrators at the time, and administration, and sell the idea that this was a good idea to go down that road.
But it wasn't a good idea, was it?
It was not, no, it was not a good idea.
Alright, well, obviously, if the warranty or insurance, I mean, I guess there's no insurance on a roof.
No, you can't.
But, yeah.
We were talking the other night in our facilities meeting, if a tornado came through and ripped that roof off tomorrow, it'd be a wonderful thing for the district. Because then I'd be, then I would be able to replace it.
There's gonna be bad storm on Saturday.
Just that roof, though, just that roof.
Just that roof, there's no one in it.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding about that.
Just the roof.
Very good. Um, very good. And again, thank you for all your effort, and, and thank you for your service. It's, it's been much appreciated. I just wanna say one thing, though. I can remember when the 2% cap was initiated, and it was, and, and I know, I don't understand why people don't show up to these things either. I can tell you right now, a lot of people don't get the notice. They don't get the notification. And, and I have no idea how to get it out there. I get mine from the patch, South Brunswick, you know, that, that, that email thing. But a lot of people may not be on it. Um, and I have no clue how, how to increase it. I'm just saying, I think a lot of people simply don't know. But I was here. I was in this state. I was alive and paying taxes when that 2% was implemented. And it was because people just suddenly got shocked by the increase, the implemental increase of taxes. And they said enough is enough. That was a bad decision and probably was done in the heat of passion, but I can see another one coming along. And that's scary to me because people make less than adequate decisions when, and that's just something to keep in mind between 5% and 7%. And yes, I understand it's, you know, the difference between market value and, and assessed value. But it's a slow incrementation and something you have to keep in mind because the pitchforks, you don't want them coming out. Anyway, thank you all for your time. I really appreciate you trying to-
Thank you so much.
Half this math I don't get, but anyway, and, and thank you, Scott. All right.
We appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm gonna close this portion. Uh, the next order of business is the Consent Agenda Review by Mr. Palowski.
Uh, we have a pretty concise consent agenda this evening. We have a bills list, some approval of non-public technology orders, accepting donations, renewal of a contract for our waste disposal. We're approving a withdrawal from maintenance reserve for our tennis court project. We have a purchase over the bid limit for that project, and we're, we actually sold some buses, part of our lease purchase program. All of our buses at this time are, uh, less than eight years old. So, uh, we're in a really good spot with regards to maintenance and, um, on those, on those vehicles. We have, we're recording and rejecting some bids for some transportation routes. We're approving our school district budget. You can look at the, um, consent agenda. If you have a chance, you can see the revenue lines of the incentive aid, where the, uh, tax levy, the other state aid. Uh, you'll also see an increase in appropriations to identify the accounts which those, um, which those revenues are, are hitting on the appropriation side. So we have a general fund of 164,729, uh, 949,000. We have a tax levy of 141,863, and 337,000. We have a special revenue line of 11,050,960. Debt service of 1,837,000. Um, and we have a total-based budget of 177,617, and 170,000. We also have, uh, our harassment, intimidation, bullying motions, student field trips. We have the approval of a resolution for travel and reimbursement expenses for staff. We did a master education tuition agreement with, um, the Educational Services of Educa, of New Jersey. We did an in-district tuition, uh, approval, and out-of-district placement approval, and we're accepting some tuition students this year. We also did an approval extension for professional services for students with special needs. We approved a sidebar with, uh, the SBEA, and we added 1.19 and accepted, um, Mr. Fetter's retirement. And that is your consent agenda.
Any questions for Mr. Palowski?
It's, yeah, it's in your backup. I'm, I can't remember.
Kim, do you wanna just, really quick?
The sidebar, the sidebar was from an agreement between the, uh, board and the SBA unit. We hired a non-instructional CSN, and they need to have a CSN in order to do the instruction. So it's an agreement that allows them two years to complete the coursework to obtain the NJ DOE certification. We do not.
Okay. So what's exactly the agreement for? What, what exactly is the agreement for? That we will have certified nurses from there?
They need to have a, a CSN.
It's for, it's for one individual.
Okay.
To get, to get the two years to get the certification.
Got it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay. We'll call Mr. Palowski.
Yes.
You have another question, Bill?
Could you elaborate on 1.9?
1.9? It's the school district budget that we just reviewed.
Okay, so, I, okay, that's everything. I just wanted to be sure that they must-
Yep, that's the school district budget. That's what we just reviewed. It's all the language we need to pass the budget for next year. Roll call? Anything else? All right.
We'll call.
Uh, Ms. Julie Farrar.
Accept.
Ms. Alicia Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Raj Krishna is absent. Mr. Mike Mitchell.
Yes.
Dr. Smitha Raj?
Yes.
Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Sony?
Yes.
Mrs. Deepa Karthik?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
The consent agenda carries. All right, surviving the year.
All right. Okay.
Close it out.
Yeah, I'm closing it out. We're closing this out. We're bringing this home. Okay. Please note that the next scheduled Board of Education meeting will, is set for Thursday, May 8th, 2025, at 7 o'clock. And that is it. Good night, South Brunswick. Oh, motion to close. I always forget this. Oh, my God.
I apologize. I forgot to mention, um, tomorrow night at Cross Road South, they'll be having their annual Supernight of Jazz. It's a wonderful event. I hope that, uh, the community will get involved and stop through. It's $10 at the door. And, um, just come. Uh, the board got, they received your, we received our invitation. So hopefully, some of us will be there tomorrow night.
Okay. Motion to close this meeting. Alicia, second. And Dr. Raj, good night, South Brunswick. Oh, oh, Ben, come on, really, Scott?